So you refreshed the agenda already if I click on it now?
Yeah, I just read, yeah, if you want to go ahead and do that, I just refreshed it and added the course on it. So it's on there if anyone you know needs to see that. And I'll make an announcement as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem at all. Let me just see that I don't see anyone else. It looks like we have all four commissioners that we will have this evening present. So if you're good Chair Gorn, I can get started and then hand it off.
Chair Gorn is very good.
All right.
There we go. Yeah, that's it, Joe. Sounds great.
Okay, let me just grab one thing here and I'll be ready. Okay, so we can get started. Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, April 12th meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. We have a couple of items to go over before we officially get started. This meeting is live on Comcast Local Channel 27 as well as on the Pacific Coast TV's website. We have many or several committee members in the audience this evening and everyone in attendance does have the opportunity to speak. Just for that, attendees, to let them know that the Chair will open up a general public comment section that's listed on the agenda for specific, for, excuse me, for items that are not listed on the agenda but would like to be heard. The Chair will open up also a public comment for each item, specific item listed on the agenda. During those times, if you would like to speak, we will recognize you by raising your virtual hand icon. And I will assist with the public comment allowing you to speak. If you have dialed by telephone only, you can push star six to mute and unmute your hand or star and star nine to raise and unraise yourself. Three minutes will be given to each of the commenters and a timer will show up on the screen. This evening, there was a late memo that came out by staff to the Planning Commission and it was emailed to them as well as it just being posted on the agenda. So if you are looking at the agenda moments ago, it may have been off and now it's been refreshed and it's currently posted. Thank you for your patience and I would now like to hand over this meeting to Chair Gorn to officially begin.
Thank you, Bridgette. We're going to start with Pledge of Allegiance if everyone can stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bridgette, roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Reddick?
I'm here.
Commissioner Gossett?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Hernandez is absent this evening. And Chair Gorn?
Here.
We have four commissioners present.
Our first thing on our agenda is minutes. Wanted to see if anyone has a comment on the minutes. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, thank you. The minutes were great. I just was in reading it and comparing it to my notes. I had asked a question about riparian woodlands versus the coastal commission. Sorry, the, yeah, I asked about coastal commission woodlands and the minutes made a reference to wetlands. I believe that Dr. Jennings was referring to the U.S. Official Wildlife Service version of wetlands in his response. And since it wasn't material, I didn't go back and discuss it at the time. But I thought it might be worth clarifying that in case someone read it later and thought that the conversation was about coastal commission. Other than that, I, we approved the minutes of March 29.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
From Commissioner Reddick.
Commissioner, Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
And Chair Gorn?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
It brings us to public comment for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. So we have two things on our agenda tonight. One of them has been postponed. I think the agenda's been updated, right, to reflect that? The Measure D allocations has been put off. We have two items on our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
Chair Gorn, we did not pull the item off the published agenda. Staff has notified all of the applicants for Measure D allocations that the item is going to be heard on May 10. And we are coordinating with all of those folks. I do see a few in the, in the room here tonight. We'll just be clear that there will be no presentation or action taken on the ratification for the Measure D rankings this evening. We need more time to go through them and we are also inviting applicants to meet with us to have a very open process for confirming their scores.
So it is still on the agenda? So how do you comment on it?
You just, well, that's a good question. I guess I'll turn to the city attorney. Since we're continuing this item, Winter, can people who are here for Measure D speak during public forum since it won't be heard tonight?
Well, I think that if we pull it off the agenda, then it will no longer be on the agenda and they can speak in the public forum. I think another opportunity would be to open the public hearing on it and just take comments from the public as opposed to having a whole, you know, presentation and everything and then continue it to either a date certain or an unspecified date in the future. And then we'll get even more public comment at that one. So I think those are the two options I see.
Through the Chair. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, thank you. If, depending on how many people there are out there on that subject, it might be received well by them if we bring that item early. If you decide you want to have a public comment session, bring this forward in the agenda just to hear what they have to say. And then continue the item or just continue the item now so that they know that when it will be and they don't have to wonder what's going to happen after however long it takes for us to work on the other items on the agenda.
So for them to comment now in public forum, Jill or Winter, we need to vote to move that out of, off the agenda? Is that correct?
Well, I think what I heard Commissioner, Commissioner Benjamin saying was you just reshuffle the order of the agenda items and call up the Measure D one first, just open it up for the purpose of taking the public comment on that agenda item and then proceed.
So before we do that, we have to say that this is a public comment time. If you have a comment on something that's not on the agenda, so not on the three items that are currently on the agenda, now is the time to talk. So is there anyone who wants to raise their hand to talk about anything that is not one of those three items on the agenda tonight?
I'm, I'm saying no one.
Yeah, I know. Okay. So we will not, so we can move on. I guess we'll.
Through the Chair, I move that we bring item 2B forward.
Do that one first. We'll open. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have to vote on this, correct?
So Gossett?
A second from Commissioner Gossett. So we need a roll call.
Yes. Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Chair, Chair Gorn?
Yes, that sounds great.
Okay, motion move to move.
Now I would like to officially open public comment for an item that we are going to delay hearing. But if anyone wants to comment on it now, you are welcome to. If anyone wants to talk about Measure D allocations.
I have. I have one so far and it's Kim Cutler and I will go ahead and allow her to speak. Yeah. Go ahead, Kim.
Hi.
Sorry.
My name's Kit Cutler. I live at 533 Barrows Street. I know Commissioner Gossett pretty well. How are you, Margaret? I, you know, I read the memo and we have an ADU petition or application pending. I understand, you know, the, I spoke with Mr. Phillips and he explained why we're pulling this, this agenda item from the agenda today and postponing it another month. I understand it. It sounds like the right decision. My question was more, will you in the future modify your evaluation procedure to avoid having this double step kind of process like, like we're experiencing now? It seems suboptimal, at least to me. And it would be better, I think, if, I think being crystal clear and robust about the rating system is probably, is the best thing for everybody and the fairest thing. But, but having it, you know, having it go through one round of rating and then a sort of, they go through a second round, I think is problematic. And I wonder if you have any thoughts in this short time about how you'll do differently in the future to avoid this.
Thank you. I think that's a great question. If we have any other public comments first and then we'll get to the question. There any other public comment on the Measure D allocations? You can raise your hand, your virtual hand, just so you can make your voice heard. See anybody else? Okay, so we'll close the public comment for Measure D allocation and then answer that question. Jill?
Thank you. We appreciate the question. We've been working very hard to accomplish exactly what the Speaker wished had occurred tonight. Two years ago, we brought a interpretation document to the Planning Commission. Measure D is very old. It relies upon almost a two-decade-old version of Build It Green checklist, which is not wholly applicable to Half Moon Bay, nor is it especially current with regards to current kinds of standards for sustainability and other things that are handled to really frankly, a higher level than they used to be. That set of interpretations was acknowledged by the Commission and we have been using it. This is the third year we've been using it. Last year, we updated it a bit because ADUs are especially challenging in that they really weren't anticipated by the Measure D code other than as part of development with a single-family home. So we have an additional set of interpretations. This year, we followed both of those procedures. But we frankly, I'm just going to be frank with you, we're really overwhelmed. We have a huge number of applications and not very many allocations available. And we are down two staff people and we just need more time with these. And we do not intend to have this happen again and we apologize for it and we appreciate everyone's patience.
Well, and I could personally add that this is exactly the kind of thing that staff has worked really hard to not have happen. Because any kind of controversy over Measure D puts them in a bad spot. So I could say that this was definitely not intentional. So are we good? Does anybody else want to comment on this or can we move on to the next thing?
What, through the Chair, what is the date at which we are continuing this item?
May 10.
Okay.
I move that we continue this item to a date certain, not being May 10.
Ah, yes. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Reddick?
We have a second.
Roll call is Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chair?
Ah, yes. So, let's see, that brings us to the Grand View's agenda item. Before we get to that, can I just raise a couple of things? One of them is that Commissioner Reddick has notified me that he's going to recuse himself from the last item, 1C. And so if it's possible, I would like to have the, let's see. We have to, can we move up the Director's Report and Commissioner, you know, Commissioner notification, you know, comments to before that item so that he can go?
Oh, I, I move that.
And then the, and the second thing is that, you know, normally we have this process where we do a presentation and then clarifying comments and then public comment and then more questions. And we tried something last week that I, last time, that I would like to try again, which is just to move the clarifying questions into the regular, into all the questions so that if we do have a lot of public comment, we can get to it quickly. And if we don't have a lot of public comment, then we can get to the questions quickly. There really aren't all questions clarifying questions. Maybe that one wasn't. That was a rhetorical question. So, um, let's go with staff presentation. Who is presenting this? Is that Scott?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. That was a project I've been working on. Thank you for the introduction and nice to see all the commissioners this evening. I'll go ahead and give a brief PowerPoint presentation and give you a little summary of what's been going on with 909 Grand View. Okay, so this project includes a new single residence with an attached accessory dwelling unit. Okay, so this project was previously reviewed by the Planning Commission back on August 10th, 2021. At that meeting, the Planning Commission had the discussion centered around wetlands and design compatibility. And regarding the wetlands, there were concerns that possibly wetlands within the vicinity were not included in the wetland delineation. So that was, you know, one of the concerns the Commission had and noted that more study was needed to determine whether or not there were additional wetlands in the area, including vegetation and soil samples. The Commission also identified the need for our Architectural Advisory Committee to review the project as far as design compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood with mass and bulk and, you know, potential privacy concerns. So the Commission continued the item to a date uncertain to allow time for further wetland analysis and revisions to the project and then also Architectural Advisory Committee consideration. Now, the permits requested include a coastal development permit and architectural review. And the site has now been posted four times, once when the application was initially submitted. And then we also posted it during the circulation of the draft SECA document. We posted the site for the previous meeting and for the meeting tonight. And then we also published a legal notice in the newspaper for this evening as well as sent, we sent out notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet and all the occupants within 100 feet. Now, as far as the revisions to the project, the, the main one was that there's been a net reduction in square footage of about 200 square feet. And then also the westerly side setback has increased from six feet to seven feet. Also, you know, on the west elevation, four windows have been removed and sizes of the remaining windows have been reduced or obscured glass added. The second story plate height has been reduced as well as the overall roof height and, and the pitch of the roofs. Both have been reduced. Shortly after we received revised plans, we scheduled this item for review by our Architectural Advisory Committee. And the AAC unanimously, they were supportive of the design of the new house. They, they did have some suggestions about some changes to consider on the west elevation just to improve the old overall design. But as far as mass and bulk and privacy, the AAC felt that the, the changes to the project addressed the concerns that were brought up at the previous Planning Commission meeting in regard to architectural design. Now, just a brief overview, this, this slide shows the site and surrounding area. The site is at the end of the developed Grand View Boulevard within Grand View Terrace subdivision and includes two 25-foot wide lots. There are some seasonal wetlands in the area. The site is zoned R1B2, which allows for a single-family residential. And then a couple of key points for the Commission to consider, compliance with our zoning regulations, design compatibility specifically with our single-family residential design guidelines, coastal resource conservation standards that have the buffer requirements, and then also adequacy of our SECA document that was circulated. Now, this slide shows the updated site plan and the blue line indicates the wetland buffer edge of the 100-foot wetland buffer. And notice that the driveway and the roadway extension stopped just shy of the wetland buffer edge. So, you know, the, the project, even the frontage improvements, take into consideration the revised wetland buffer. Now, as I mentioned earlier, most of the design changes took place, are most noticeable on the west elevation. This, this slide shows the previous design just for comparison purposes. Then I'll flip to the new design. You'll notice the, the decreased amount of glazing and overall height of the projects, but increased articulation. So, you know, the, the reduction in square footage, the added pop-out certainly added some articulation, especially to the west elevation. And then this slide shows the colors and materials. They remain the same as what the Commission took, reviewed last time. Grading and drainage plan was updated to reflect the new design, specifically the, the added side setback, the western side setback, as well as the minor change to the wetland buffer. The detention basin still remains roughly in the same place outside of the wetland buffer. And then also the landscape plan was updated. You'll notice that drought tolerant plant pallet is throughout the, the site and split rail fencing is located along the wetland buffer edge and then the front property line. And then within the wetland buffer itself, wetland plants have been sited. All of this has been reviewed by the, the project biologist to make sure there aren't any invasives or anything that would create any impact to the surrounding area. Now, you, you probably noticed in the, in the attached staff report, we included the updated wetland delineation. And along with the changes to the home design, further biological analysis took place, mostly northeast of the site, looking for the possibility of additional wetlands that weren't picked up in the previous wetland delineation. This work confirmed the original wetland delineation with minor modifications and the associated wetland buffer was remapped, sort of a different, a little bit of a different shape to reflect the slight modification of the, the wetland area. And then the wetland buffer was also confirmed by a licensed surveyor. So the, the project, the applicant actually had his surveyor go out and survey and make for certain that, you know, exactly where this 100-foot buffer is located. And now the revised wetland buffer does accommodate the, the, the new design. And just a little update, we did, an initial study was prepared for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And this is primarily due to mitigation measures that were recommended by the biologist due to the proximity of the seasonal wetlands. The SECA document was circulated for 20 days and we did receive some comments, which we provided responses for. and added those to the initial study. And, uh, that's, that's about all I have. As we mentioned earlier, uh, we did distribute a memorandum to the planning commission and to the public with a couple of emails that were received, uh, before or after the packet went out. We had some general responses in the memorandum and the, uh, the, the project biologist is also logged in this evening. If you'd like additional clarification on anything that was noted in the memorandum, he is available to answer questions as well. The, uh, property owner and applicant, as well as the project designer and his design team is also logged in this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or, uh, this chair, Lauren, as you mentioned, if you'd like to sort of lump all the questions together, we can certainly do that. So.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, I would like to just, um, if we could just jump into the public, any public comment. Forget if we can, uh, see if there's anyone who would like to comment on the nine oh nine Grand View development, the Grand View House. Now would be the time to talk about it. If you raise your virtual hand and you can, um, let us know what you think about that.
All right. The only person I have is the, um, project, um, applicant representatives. Let me go ahead and. Go ahead, Camus Steinmetz can, um, speak if they'd like. You can just unmute. There you go.
Okay, great. All right. Good evening, commissioners, um, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my client Bruce Stebbins. Thanks also to Scott Phillips for his work and diligence on Mr. Stebbins' project application. My name is Camus Steinmetz. I'm the land use attorney with Jorgensen Siegel McClure and Flagel. I'm not sure if I'm able to get my camera on. Can people see me or not?
No.
Would you like me to move over?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's, it's, it's fine with, without is fine also. So Mr. Stebbins engaged me shortly after your meeting last August, when you last reviewed the project and continued the hearing. And since then, and at your direction, the wetlands delineation was reviewed by four different biologists and confirmed with only minimal modifications. As Mr. Phillips explained, there is no development proposed within the buffer zone area on my client's property, other than some split rail fencing for purposes of delineating and further protecting the buffer area, as is the custom in Half Moon Bay. Additionally, native riparian planting suitable for wetlands are proposed within the buffer zone as part of the landscaping plan. So since the project was last before you in August, it was substantially revised and reduced to address neighbor concerns regarding privacy, massing and height. And as detailed in my letter to you dated April sixth, that was included in your packet. My client went above and beyond addressing these concerns by voluntarily making some significant changes. He reduced the combined square footage of the project to below two thousand five hundred square feet. The main house is now just one thousand five hundred and ten square feet. The ADU is five hundred and eighty-three square feet and the garage is three hundred and eighty-eight square feet, which is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. He increased the Westerly side setback from six feet to seven feet, which is one foot more than required by code and two feet more than the five foot standard in the neighborhood. He removed two windows on the west elevation, reducing the size of the remaining windows and using obscured glass on certain windows to address privacy concerns from the neighbors. He reduced massing on the west elevation, second story, resulting in reduced length and lowered plate height and increased setback. And finally, he reduced the roof ridge line to twenty-three point three five feet, which is four point six five feet lower than the twenty-eight foot maximum allowed. And additionally, he reduced the roof pitch from five twelfths to four twelfths. And as, um, Mr. Phillips mentioned at your direction, the project was routed to the AAC for review. They reviewed the project on March twenty-third and concluded that the project was consistent with single family design guidelines, including the guidelines governing massing and height and neighborhood compatibility. They suggested that one of the windows Mr. Stebbins had removed to address privacy concerns be put back in to increase the livability of the ADU. And this suggestion is incorporated and reflected in the updated plan set in your packet. So, um, in closing, we respectfully request that you follow planning staffs and the AAC's unanimous, unanimous recommendation to adopt the MND and approve my client's project as revised and currently proposed. So thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. My client Bruce Stebbins, the project designer Chris Stevens, and biologist Patrick Copernis are also in attendance and available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinmetz. Um, is there anyone else in the public would like to comment on the nine oh nine Grand View? House? Now, seeing that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close public comment. And open commissioner comment. Does anyone have questions or comments about this project? Somebody has questions. I know I have questions. Mr. Benjamin has questions.
I always have questions.
You do?
So, uh, although I, I want to begin by saying I really appreciate the thoroughness of the staff report. And I appreciate the responses to the questions I emailed in, uh, this morning. Uh, I thought they were both constructive and helpful. I am, uh, looking at the, and I appreciated that the, the wetlands in the Little Riparian intermittent corridor, corridor that were discussed in the report that are more or less in the right of way of Grand View are shown on the map. And then there's another area that's not explicitly discussed, that's marked in the same color. And rather than asking what that means and trying to understand what the ramifications are for people who are not part of this project, I'll just ask whether the distance from that riparian corridor to the development of the proposed project is a hundred feet.
And measured from where?
So I'm looking at the figure, uh, that is in our staff report on, it's figure one. In the, actually, you can look at it in the, uh, in the memo that just came in. It's on page two. So there's previous wetlands definition from an earlier project. And then there's figure one, which is the, and you'll see that there's a, a linear corridor. That's an intermittent feature. There's a point in the, in the Grand View Terrace right of way that is confirmed as a wetland. It's a riparian area, but it also has wetland properties with respect to the California Coastal Commission definition. At least that's my understanding of what the report says. There's another area downstream from that point that doesn't have any points attached to it. That's fine. It's got a color. And it's got a blue arrow that goes from that sort of longer blue strip to the area where the story pools are more or less visible. And my question is, if I am at the boundary of that blue line, it looks to me like it's about a hundred feet to the proposed development. Is that correct?
Um, Scott, are you still there? Are you, are you the one to answer that? Or should the biologist start, take, take that?
Yes, I can start out and then, um, you know, maybe, maybe I can have the biologist back me up. I, it is, uh, less than a hundred feet. But it is more than the, uh, the, uh, the required ripe-riparian buffer. So, yeah, I think, I think it's somewhere around seventy. So.
Measured, measured from what starting point?
The top of bank. So.
And is that to the, Scott, uh, thank you. Is that to the, uh, to the actual structure or is that to the edge of the lot or what do you say?
Corner of the property, sort of the, and then, and that's estimate. Yeah. Yeah, it's to the southeastern corner of the property. So.
Okay.
So, so more than, and, and we didn't, we didn't see that as a, as a major concern because it was clearly more than the, the riparian buffer distance. Therefore, the subject property is, is not, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the subject property.
So, thank you for the, thank you for the reply. I, I used my very high technology ruler and I measured to the, uh, to the building, uh, as I can see it on that picture. It actually matched the, because I have that hundred foot wetland buffer that's hopefully marked, uh, with respect to, uh, that sort of blue comma. I don't, I guess that's wetlands three. And it actually was almost exactly that distance. And it sounds like incidental.
Yes. And now keep in mind though, riparian buffer is smaller than a wetland buffer.
Oh, I, I do keep that in mind. I also keep in mind what the wetland buffer is. Thank you. No other questions.
Muted. Commissioner Gossett, you had your hand up?
My question is, um, I noticed in the LUP policy six, um, dash five six that in a, a wetland zone, um, there's, there's, they require a conservation easement or a deed restriction or a comparable mechanism. And I guess my question is, um, are split rail fences considered a comparable mechanism? And is it endurable?
Yes, thank you for.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Scott. I was gonna offer something, but you go first.
Okay, well, and I, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for, uh, pointing that out, uh, to begin with and that we did look at that and, uh, consider the, you know, the, the amount of property that's within the wetland buffer and what we, uh, we want to be consistent on what we, uh, ask our applicants to do. And, um, split rail fencing made the most sense. And it, it is noted in the conditions of approval, which are enforceable. So.
Okay, so, so someone monitors that over time? I mean, because, I mean, that's, I mean, that, I don't know how, um, you know, how that would endure in thirty years, forty years, you know, especially if the wetland shifts. So, um, you know, because if the property changes hands, if there's not a deed restriction, you know, how is, uh, anyone gonna know? May, maybe it's in the condition of approval that would be disclosed in a, you know, uh, in a disclosure. I don't know. I'm just asking.
Yes, the conditions of approval are enforceable and, uh, conceivably our code enforcement could, uh, take action if the safe of split rail fencing was removed. So.
Okay. And I wanted to say, I should have said at first, thank you so much for the staff presentation. And I did attend the meeting and, uh, not attend, I viewed the video on August tenth. And, um, and I really like, uh, what, you know, the, uh, the project applicant has done, you know, to address concerns with, um, uh, neighbors and such. I should have said that at the beginning.
Well, thank you. And Winter, did you have anything else to add?
So, Winter, uh, Winter, thanks for waiting.
Oh, yeah, no, um, basically Scott covered it, but I just wanted to say that those conditions of approval, which, um, prohibit development in the wetland buffer area, uh, they do what we call run with the land. So they buy not only the current owner, but the successors in interest. So I just wanted to get that piece in there as sort of what we consider comparable to a deed restriction uh, and consistent with that LUP provision.
Okay, thank you.
So you're saying, I'm sorry, just to be clear, you're saying that the, um, it's, the code enforcement of watching out to make sure that the fence doesn't deteriorate over forty years is the same as the deed restriction?
I'm saying that the, whether you have a deed restriction or a conservation easement or a condition of approval, someone has to monitor and enforce all of those things. And the, what I was saying is just that the condition of approval is as permanent and as enforceable as a deed restriction is.
Thank you. Does anyone else have another question or comment or does anybody want to talk about this? I, I did have a question about, um, the seasonal survey. Um, when was that done? You said, you said there was a seasonal survey done of that wetland area?
So, so there, there was additional analysis done. Uh, there's, there certainly will need to be surveys before construction begins. Uh, there is, there was, uh, you know, some surveying that took place, but the, the main focus was on soil samples and plant samples and, uh, checking for, you know, whether or not there was, uh, you know, any wetlands in the area. Uh, you know, that might be a better question to pose to the biologist. And they can go into detail on, uh, exactly what they did in the field and when. So.
I also wondered, like, if, so you gave them the previous maps that had, you know, the, there was like a, a little circle of what had been wetland and somebody filled it in. Um, and then there were the, the, so they have all that information and they can address that, right?
Yes, absolutely. So, so we always, uh, research city records to see what biological work has been done in certain areas and provide that to the current biologist. Uh, and we did that with this, this, uh, project as well. So.
Do we need to reopen public comment to get the biologist in here or can we just bring him in?
I think we can just bring him in.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Scott, that's Chris.
Ivan.
Got it.
Ivan should, should be, I think he's joined us.
Yes, I got him. Thanks.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ivan, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi. So, uh, to answer the question, the most recent, uh, survey of the, of the location was done on February sixteenth of this year.
And that's, that's mostly soil samples is what you did and, and looking for, um, wetland plants. Is that right?
Soil samples were conducted in August and a cursory wetland delineation was, was performed in August. However, that is not an optimal time, uh, to be conducting a wetland delineation. And so we had some questions which, uh, revisited in February. Uh, and, and we were able to confirm the wetland, uh, boundary in the, during the February visit and in fact reduce it.
Okay. And that, um, that little circle of previous wetland that someone had filled in, are you, do you know about that? Like, that's, 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 I think, close to what you, um, where you made the wetland delineation. Do you know about that, first of all? From previous map?
Perhaps there's maybe, maybe, uh, Scott, is there a more specific terminology?
So i- i- if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, I think what you're referring to is the area that, uh, where there was the sort of the green clump of grass that was seen, uh, shortly before the, the last meeting, uh, roughly in that area.
Yeah, it was, it, it appeared on a, on a previous, um, map. I don't remember the date. Maybe Commissioner Benjamin would remember.
Yeah, it was the live oak report. So.
Right.
Yes.
So there was.
I may even be able to pull it up here.
Okay, I believe that location had previously been referred to as Wetland Four by Live Oak.
Correct. Yes.
So I had looked at that location in August, uh, and it was true that there was a facultative, uh, plant growing there. However, the soils did not support wetland vegetation. I had marked a polygon around that facultative plant. Over, under further investigation and with the support of other biologists, we confirm that facultative plants could be either wetland or upland, uh, based on other pieces of evidence. No other pieces of evidence supported wetlands being present there, including hydrology or soils. One of the concerns I had at the time was that it might be saturated during the winter. However, during the February visit, However, during the February visit, uh, at that time, um, and also because, uh, mowing had occurred. In, uh, late spring and I wanted to, to, to make sure that, that the results we had, uh, were, were confirmable. During the winter time after there had been both the rain and a couple seasons since mowing. Uh, looking at that, uh, with Mr. Coganus, uh, we confirmed that that area, uh, was not wetland.
And that, um. So, that's very helpful, thank you. Just to be clear, that, that little circle of plant. Life that had been called wetland, it's pretty near the road. Is, is that included in the, you know, you've made this little wetland delineation? Just off the road. I just wanna know if that includes that spot or not. Do you know?
It does not.
Okay. Cause, okay. So, when I look at it personally, I mean, this is a tiny little thing. But when I look at it personally, it's clear that it's been filled in over time with rock and others, other dirt. And so, I don't, I wouldn't really expect the wetland soil to, to support wetlands. Um, because it's not anymore, but, um. I just wanted to understand if that was included or not. Yes, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, thank you. I, um, listening to the last comment you made, uh, leads me to think that we may be talking about two different places here. Um, the last time this item came up, I remember we took, I think I brought a photograph and I forwarded it to Scott. Of a little area that was a green patch that was well off Grandview Terrace. And then there was another, and I think that's the one that Mr. Parr, uh, Dr. Parr, maybe I apologize if I got it wrong. Mr. Parr, thank you, um, was referring to as containing facultative veg. I think the area you are talking about, and I also remember seeing, was very close to the road. It was simply of, an area that was full of rocks.
Right.
Um, it didn't have any facultative vegetation or obligate vegetation. It didn't have any vegetation. It had rocks. And, uh, the thought was that that might be a unpermitted fill. I think that's what you're referring to.
That's exactly right.
So, so my question, we, I'll let you follow, sorry.
Well, so, uh, so my question was, when I used to look at what is currently the wetland delineation, did it include that? And, and it clearly doesn't, but I don't know if that's, um, germane or not.
Well, we have a, we have a policy in our L C P that says, um. That protected resources aren't denied protection because of unpermitted work and certainly a fill would have been unpermitted. But it sounds like that hasn't been explicitly, you know, I, I will say, when I walked up the road today, I didn't see it. It looked like it had just been decimated. Um, so I don't know. I don't know what to do with that. I'm puzzled. I, I'm a little disappointed, but I'm mostly puzzled.
Yeah, it was just an odd thing and, and I've been seeing it on a previous map. I, I, again, don't remember the year of that map where it was still in yet it as a wetland spot. But, um, but I believe it was, it was a while ago. Um, anyway. Um, I don't mean to hang this up over.
Yeah, I, you know. Yeah, I mean, from a point of view of, um, you know, I defer to Winter, but, you know, neither you nor I are experts. And we don't have the evidence in place, so other than noting it, I don't know that we have a lot to go there. I would like, however, to, um, try, Mr. Parr, to understand. And I, I took Scott's, uh, comment about a more than adequate buffer from the. The fifty foot buffer from the intermittent stream to, uh, the development. That we're actually in excess of that fifty foot buffer, so I'm, I'm very clear on staff's view of this. Um, but I wanna try to, from my own sense, understand how we got away from. The possibility that there is a, uh, a coastal commission, one parameter wetland. Within that riparian area, um, that is roughly a hundred feet from the proposed development. I'm not asserting that there is. I'm not the expert, but my grasp is that the old. Uh, riparian, uh, wetlands, uh, guideline memo has long since been discredited. Uh, the one that was put out in, I think it was two thousand and eleven, maybe? No, it was earlier than that. Um, and so we have a clear, there's a clear conclusion here that even though. Uh, in the previous wetlands delineation, I think it was point one A was, was, uh, coastal commission. Uh, I'd have to go back and look, but my sense is that we, we saw junkies, we saw, uh, vegetation. That, that we would expect to see in a wetland. And it is true that it is in a riparian area, but I just wanna have super clarity. In understanding why we don't think of that as a one parameter wetland. Could you please help me understand that?
So if I understand correctly, you're looking at what is called the man-made drainage ditch on our figure.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, if I, if it will help, we can look at the figure two in the. Um, the staff memo that came out, it's the one that, uh, has points labeled one A and one B. Sort of in the vicinity of, um, of that man-made drainage ditch. And it's clearly channelized. I mean, that's not a question about whether it's, whether it is, uh, man-made or not. I'm, I'm very clear on that. Um, but my understanding when we went through the parameters was that there was, um, vegetation. I think it was, um, uh, junkies, but I'm not absolutely sure. I'd have to go back and look. But, but at that time, that map talked about, uh, the intermittent buffer. I am interested in understanding our current thinking about what's going on in that, uh, that intermittent drainage. That despite the fact that it may be riparian, it is not a one parameter coastal commission wetland. I think the.
Mr. Chair, before we jump into that, I, I, if, if I could provide some clarity on the last point. About the wetland number four, I was able to find that map from the previous, uh, Live Oak report. If I could, uh, show, show the commission that for clarification.
Thanks.
And while we're waiting, that was, those little, uh, pink flags were very helpful visiting the site today, whoever put them up. Thank you.
So roughly in the middle of the screen, you'll notice that wetland number four that's shown as two hundred and thirty-four square feet. Uh, I think, I believe that was, that's the area that you was, uh, just discussed before.
Two thousand eight.
Yes, and now back then, Live Oak, uh, found that there was, uh. Hydric soils in that location, which was inconsistent with all the, the other reports in that area. And inconsistent with what Ivan, uh, found when he did his soil samples. Uh, and then he also consulted with other biologists just to make sure that that was actually correct. Cause they were, I know he was concerned that, that, you know, Live Oak was saying, okay, there might be, uh, hydric soils in the area. Um, but we found that that actually was not the case. Uh, and Ivan, if you don't mind, maybe, uh, you might be able to provide some, you know, expand upon that a little bit. Make sure I'm, I'm saying the right thing here, so.
Even within the Live Oak report, it had described that they had delineated that area as a wetland based on soils. But looking at the, uh, wetland delineation data sheets, it did not indicate that they were wetland soils. So, my suspicion is that they saw, uh, the same plants that we, that we saw during August. And, and mapped to wetland without really any, uh, additional information.
So, Mr. Parr, just to be clear, you, you've seen this map before, right? This wetland delineation. And you look specifically at that spot, which is, I guess, number four on this map. Um, right? And that's the, that was my, I mean, some, to me, minor concern, but it is a concern.
Yes, wetland four is, is my understanding is the same area where the green grass was growing in August. So, that I specifically went out to delineate.
Uh, to the chair?
Yeah, please, Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. I, I'm just looking at the right of way of Grandview Boulevard and remembering walking along that, that road. And, um, I, I was thinking that green patch was a little further away from the road. I, I could be wrong, of course. The map is, uh, you know, a little soft on where the actual right of way is. But that looks so close to the road that I thought it might be part of the area that was filled with rocks. Um, but I understand that was not, the, the area you and I were looking at is not the area that Mr. Parr is referring to.
He is, I think he's referring to number, the number three area, frankly.
That's my guess.
Uh, there was an area I looked at, close to the area of number four specifically. But had the vegetation in question. I'm unfamiliar with, with the area with the rocks. Um, I, I did not encounter rocks during any of the soil samples that I took.
Okay, I thi- I think we're kinda done. This is, it's very, I mean. Again, minor, but I just wanna make sure that you did review that area. And you're comfortable with saying that that is, um, not seasonal wetland as delineated in two thousand and eight.
Correct. It is not a seasonal wetland.
Okay.
Okay, so can we turn, uh, back to the, uh, riparian corridor? And look at point one A from the old survey? Which I believe had, uh, one parameter of the three parameters suggested wetlands. And I'm trying to be sure that I am, I, and I'm clear that this is a channelized drainage. Um, I wanna be clear that I understand what the specific guidelines are through the coastal commission. Or our L C P that tell us that, that because it's an intermittent drainage. Uh, a riparian area, that we are discounting any potential for one parameter wetlands. Can you please help me with that?
And Scott, if you have the, do you have that map that you can pull up or no? Cause I think you have that, right? The, the map that Commissioner Benjamin's talking about?
Yes, absolutely. I can go ahead and screen share.
And I wanna be very clear that I am only asking about the current application. I am not, I am making no ramifications toward any other parcels or project.
So here's the map, and then if, uh, may- maybe Ivan, you can help us out and. If, if I'm hearing Commissioner Benjamin correctly, it's, it's really a question of, is this a riparian corridor? Or are there wetlands within the ri- riparian corridor? So.
So, you are, you're discussing the area that is, that is being indicated by the blue arrow.
Uh, actually, it's more the, the, the black dots where the, 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 the wetland sample points were taken.
I see.
Yeah.
So, so there is a, an intermittent stream buffer along the banks of a man-made drainage ditch. Um, I don't see indicated in this delineation that there was ever wetland marks there. When I looked, there was in fact some facultative wetland species, uh. And I did, uh, dig some soil pits and found that the soils did not concur with wetland soils. Um, and that the vegetation, even though there was an understory of some wetland species. The predominant species, uh, particularly the upper story, uh, were, were either upland species. Or facultative upland species. Uh, the only truly riparian area. Uh, you know, indicated on the map is up in the northeast air, uh, corner with the royal willows.
And what wetland species did you see that were not predominant?
Uh, so there were rushes and, uh, caraxes, both of which were facultative, uh, plants. So, ones that could grow in wetlands or, uh, in upland areas.
Thank you.
Just, so, so I'm clear on this. Um, if, so the fact that this is channelized made no difference in your thinking.
Hello? Patrick.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that was exciting. Um, so, this is really an analysis of what was. You know, what are the plants that are present within the depressed area of this channel? And the fact that they were, let's say if you'd found, uh, typha, not folia, which is an obligate. Um, you might have felt differently about this. Is that right?
That's right.
But junkus, what I think was found there, if I heard you right, uh, that's a facultative, is that right?
That's right.
And there were no obligates in that area?
No. It would all, the obligates would also have to be in a certain percentage, uh, within the plots taken to be considered, uh, a wetland. As well.
So that's a long channel. How would we decide what area, you know, what's the denominator of that fraction? Would it be just, you know, density per unit area?
Well, I would, I would take a series of points along the channel, focusing on the areas within the buffer.
So some of them could come out wetlands and some of them might not be. And if the, we wouldn't average them and say, gosh, it's a three hundred and twenty foot channel. And only ten feet have obligates, therefore there's no wetland. We wouldn't do that.
You would average them within, uh, quadrats at the sample points. So I would focus the quadrats on the areas that I thought could be wetlands to make sure that they were not. And then pair them with areas that I would believe to be uplands and compare the results. But if any point within a quadrant represented a wetland, then you would count that as a wetland.
I see. Okay, but as it turns out, there were no obligates in that area. They were all facultative. And there were no other reasons to call it that. So I'm, I really appreciate the insight, Mr. Parr. Thank you for that.
Not a problem.
Thanks, Scott. Um, does anybody else have any other comment or question or concerns? Then, uh, good.
I wa- I would like to follow up.
I'm sorry. After Commissioner Reddick. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Goran. I, I just wanted to, uh, if I, uh, I sense we're kind of through the clarifying questions. And my deliberation on this is that for those of us who were involved in the August tenth hearing on this. There was a very robust discussion of these issues and design issues. And, and I'm, um, happy with the process that staff and the applicant have followed since then. The, the process of, of making changes to design that increase the, uh, compatibility of the project. And addressed some of the concerns about massing and, and privacy. And, and importantly involved going to our architectural advisory committee for their seal of approval. Uh, and I, I like the other, that, I, I, I think it's very important that, uh, additional field work, which we're just discussing. Was done to essentially confirm the wetlands delineation here. Uh, the addition of, uh, to the landscape plan of, uh, appropriate wetland plants and, and drought resistant plants. Otherwise is, is also a good step. So, so in whole, I'm, I think this has been a very, uh. Positive and healthy process and I support this project. Thank you.
And Commissioner Benjamin, what were you, what did you wanna do to follow up?
I just wanted to follow up on, uh, the, the question about, uh, the split rail fence and, uh, condition. Um, because I wanted to be clear that, uh, we, we do not expect the code enforcer folks to go patrolling. Uh, to check to see if anything has developed within that buffer area. to check to see if anything has developed within that buffer area. But the goal here, as I understand it, is that they're obliged under the conditions to maintain the split rail fence in perpetuity. Is there any, is there anything like an information plaque or anything at all that's physically visible that might tell an owner, you know, hey, this is, this area on the other side of this fence is protected wetlands buffer, uses are regulated, you know, don't put your lawn furniture here. Don't put, I know that sounds crazy, but you'd be surprised how often that happens in a riparian area.
Something we talked about before, but I did not see that in this.
And I'm wondering if that's, if, if it would be outrageous to suggest some kind of little informational plaque on the fence just to address Commissioner Gossett's legitimate question about how we, how we enforce this? Is that too much to ask?
It's not a common practice of ours. I think this would be the first time that we would ask for that, so.
I remember in the local coastal program reviews, I brought up that I paid a visit to some family in Massachusetts and they actually, they don't go with the split rail fence. They had a large granite boulder that was set on the property and it had a bronze monument attached to the boulder that said, do not change this area under penalty of law. It was quite, it was quite, it was quite permanent within the sense of permanence. And again, you know, I acknowledge that, you know, anytime we evolve our thinking, you know, here we are with a relatively new LCP and a new set of conditions involving a riparian area. Maybe this is a situation of first impression. And this might be a time to consider improving our protective practices without limiting in any way what it is that the applicant would like to do and is agreeing not to do.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. I was, I am heartened that wetlands delineations were done during the rainy season in February. That was great. So thank you.
I should just, I agree with Commissioner Riddick, but this has been a healthy debate. It's been a good process. I'm grateful for the applicant's thoughts. I see winter has appeared. So I think it may be that she will be able to address the inquiry about the bowl of winter age.
Winter?
Well, sorry.
We can wait.
I have a little tickle in my throat. I'll be right back. Sorry.
Chair Goran, I just wanted to bring to attention that Patrick Corbun, Corain Mark and Chop is last name, but he's with Coastal Ridge Ecology. And I'm not sure that he wanted to speak after Ivan and we might have just overlooked it. His hands up, yeah. So I didn't know.
Yeah, let's check in with him.
Yeah, I, I, hi, this is Patrick Coburnus. Ivan actually addressed everything, so I don't, I don't have to say anything.
Just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to.
Thank you. Thank you.
While we're waiting for winter to return, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Gossett for noticing the policy and following up on that. And thank you for conducting the hearing that, you know, is really thorough.
And I would like to, through the chair, may I speak?
Oh, Commissioner Gossett, yes.
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Riddick said. I wish I could be as eloquent as he was, but I did attend the meeting in August and you guys had a really enriching educational discussion and I like what I heard tonight and I'm also would like to echo what Commissioner, Commissioner Riddick said and I support the project.
Thank you. Well said. Uh, winter.
All right, try, try again.
We can care if you cough.
I can't give you anything over Zoom, so it's okay. I, I don't think it would be an unreasonable request in order to make the findings you need to make under the LUP. As Scott said, it's not something we've done so much in the past or ever in the past, I guess, but I don't see any legal reason why you couldn't add that condition.
So through the chair?
Yes, I do believe we are ready for a motion.
Yeah, I think we are. I mean, I will say that in other areas where we were protecting resources, we just put up six-foot fences in the past. I have one next to my house. So you know, I know that we have taken steps to sort of make it clear to people where you do and don't do stuff. And I think this is a pretty innocuous way of doing it. So with that in mind, I'd like to move the resolution next in order approving the mitigated NECDAC and issuing the coastal development permit based on the findings and evidence contained in the staff report with the addition that the split rail fence would contain a permanent plaque that would reflect the limitations on the wetland buffer area in the, in the project area.
And we have a second. Commissioner Riddick?
I seconded.
Second's that.
And through, through the chair, sorry, before you take roll call. Ms. Ikas just told me that I think the applicant's representative had her hand up. So I don't know if you would like to hear thoughts on the plaque condition or go ahead.
Certainly, no, of course. Ms. Timmons?
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I just heard from my client, the applicant, that, that this, he's not in favor of such a plaque. I'm not seeing the nexus or the rough proportionality for adding this additional condition in reviewing the municipal code section protecting wetlands buffer zone. It seems that we meet all of the requirements of that section in removing and keeping that area free of all development, protecting it with the fence. And that serves the purpose adequately of, of the, the wetlands buffer zone protection. So I just wanted to make that comment that my client is not in favor of, of this plaque.
Okay, great. Thank you. I guess we can, we can vote on it. And if you don't like the idea of the plaque, then we can vote no and we can vote again without.
Through the chair, before we take the vote, I should just make clear that I'm suggesting that the plaque would be as the city attorney suggested, the deputy city attorney, that we're addressing evidence to support consistency with policy six dash fifty-six. So it's a way to make it a bit more, a bit more clear to people.
And I think it's a nice addition to a split rail fence, which can deteriorate over time. I think that's a point well taken. So we have a motion. We have a second. And that includes this amendment with the plaque. Do we want to do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Riddick?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
And Chair Goran?
Yes, please.
Motion approved, four zero.
So before we get to our next item, because Commissioner Riddick is going to recuse himself. If it's okay with you, Jill, I would like to go with a director's report first and planning commissioner announcements before we move on to that last item.
Thank you, everybody, for that flexibility.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. We are, we have a quick report tonight. Your agenda forecast, your next meeting is in two weeks on April 26th. We are buttoning up the downtown sidewalk and parklet activities program. It will be posted on the website. We, we think by the end of the week, the notices went out and we're really looking forward to presenting that to you. Scott Phillips will also have a single family home for you to consider. It's on Grove. And then, of course, on May 10th, you will see the detailed Measure D presentation and come back to you. And we look forward to working with all of our applicants so that they are fully understanding the process and in the loop. We had some other future items that we'll keep abreast of in May, but every year you do make a statement of general plan performance. You have to consider that for the capital improvement program. And I am currently spending as much of my time as possible working on the housing element and with a, a small cadre of really, really wonderful consultants on policy and economics of land development for housing. So we're going to have something for you on that this summer. Also engaged with Victor Gattan, who is our management analyst in the city manager's office. Right now, we're in the middle of about 15 interviews with service agencies to get their input on housing policy. And it has been inspiring and really informative. And I'm, I'm excited about how we're going to be able to put that into an actionable housing element. For city council, a couple of items coming up at their next meeting. Last time I saw you, I mentioned that the ADU ordinance, accessory dwelling unit ordinance is going back to council for a first reading. This is following coastal commission certification where they certified the city's ordinance with some minor modifications and thus we need to re-adopt it. We're also going to bring another item. You saw a application for eight eighty stone pine, the city's corporation yard upgrade project at your last meeting. We've received an appeal and we are bringing that appeal very, very quickly forward, following all of our noticing requirements to council on April 19th. And so I'm, I'm working on that staff report right now. And we're hoping to bring that forward. And if you have any questions about that appeal, I'm happy to discuss those with you at some other time after the meeting. This item is obviously not on the agenda. Some training, I was in a meeting this week with the 21 elements group that supports all of the Seminole County jurisdictions and their advanced planning efforts. The Home for All group, which is also out of the county, is preparing some training suitable for planning commissioners. And they're hoping to unveil that in June. As soon as I know the dates and the topics, of course, we'll forward that to you. And then last but not least, I have a little update about fuel load modification for 2022. Staff has been really appreciative of the time that fire district staff has, has taken with, with us to collaborate a bit this year on this season's fuel load man, modification requirements. You know, the fire district has an ordinance which requires fuel load modification and they have a resolution that identifies the properties that are subject to fuel load modification. They were kind enough to give us the APN list of those parcels. We have mapped them. We have overlapped that, that map layer with our ESHA map layers, our environmentally sensitive habitat area mapping from the local coastal land use plan. And identified three primary portions of town where most of the overlap occurs, and that's in the Venice PD. A portion of Upper Grandview, an area over off of Magnolia. And there's, there's a couple other individual parcels. So the fire district's letters went out and we know they were received last week because the city gets one. We have our own fuel load management requirements. And the city has a coastal development permit to conduct fuel load management on the Beachwood Glencrey and City-owned properties off of Cuna Road. And we do that with our grazing program. It is in collaboration with Coastside Land Trust grazing program. We, we use the same shepherd and, and it's absolutely fabulous. And they will be scheduling to come into town in May to graze the West of Railroad Conservation Corridor, the city-approved lands, as well as the SAM property between Bev Cuna Road and the Kehoe Water Course. The fire district requires a few low modification to be completed by May 13th. We are doing all we can to get that done. It's, it's a little bit harder to manage specific dates when you're relying on a herd and how fast they go and how much fuel load they need to take care of for you. We've just, for, for the privately owned properties, we, we sent follow-up letters to all of those who have ESHA mapped on their property or potential ESHA and reaffirmed the importance of following the fire district's requirements for fuel load management, but that there are also requirements and best practices associated with reducing vegetation on parcels affected by ESHA. We are strongly recommending that they contact a biologist and get, get some help and advice about how to approach that on their parcels. And we're looking forward to hearing from any of these property owners who may have questions. Furthermore, the fire district takes care of the fuel load management on parcels where the property owner is not responsive. And so we have communicated with the district that we can be supportive to them if they need to do that and find biologists who would be available to, to support their efforts. So this is something you asked for last year. This is a first step. We do not have a comprehensive approach to this so much as really just trying to raise awareness and encourage better practices than what, what has happened in the past. We have some other ideas going forward, but we, we need to see how this goes this year and then we'll, we'll think about next steps. If you see anything going on out in the field that concerns you, you, you all know Joe Butcher, let him know and he'll go check it out. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. And by the way, thanks for following up on the planning commission training. I know that there, there isn't much out there at the moment, so I appreciate you trying to find that for us. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, I wanted to also thank Bridget and Jill for chasing the possibility of the planning commissioner handbook. I know that's still work in progress, but I really appreciate that thought. And just speaking to the last item in Jill's report, thank you so much for working with the district. It was, there were some troubling episodes in the past and it's nice to be ahead of the game. This is the sort of leadership that is just the hallmark of great, of great staff. So thank you for that. In terms of getting it all done in time, I know that at least in, on the parcel near the, what's called the Landstrip Parcel, there was grazing right down to the bare, you know, all the way down to the bare soil, which is more, actually that's too much. So we can probably move them along maybe faster and get more done. I don't know. But just, just a thought out there. Thank you again.
And Commissioner Riddick?
I just wanted, excuse me, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Benjamin said. I, I remember the, the controversy over the fuel load issues a year ago. We did ask for exactly what Director Ikas has reported, staff has done. So it's great to, to see our team in City Hall able to take on a new request like that, even when, when things are so busy and you're so shorthanded. So thank you for that, for that, that proactivity.
Great. It brings us to planning commission communications. Is there anybody who has an announcement? Or any communications? Or any communications? And I am seeing none. So that is going to bring us to the Haffington Bay property acquisition, West Railroad. So we will say good night to Commissioner Riddick.
Thank you, Chair Goran. I, I just wanted to, for the record, to state that my residence is very close to the West Railroad PD, so I'm going to recuse myself from this item. And say good night to you all.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye bye.
So first of all, we have to open public comment, which I don't see anybody out there, but is there anybody who would like to comment on this Western Railroad property acquisition by the City of Haffington Bay?
Through the chair, I'll just give a, a brief summary of the item before you. I don't have a PowerPoint. Again, you, you've seen one of, one of these actions recently. The commission is being asked to find that the acquisition of four parcels in the West of Railroad Plan Development Area is in conformance with the city's general plan. And in this case, we specifically are looking to book a local coastal land use plan insofar as it serves as the city's general plan land use element. Your staff report cites the parcel numbers and provides background on, on the acquisition process. This is a purchase and sales agreement that the city council has approved for the city manager to negotiate with, with these property owners and you have a resolution to that end as well as the citations from the land use plan about the West of Railroad plan development and intended uses for the plan development and the purpose of the West of Railroad PD. And if you have any questions about that, please, please let us know.
Thank you. Sorry for taking things out of order. I'm still learning. So we don't have public comment. Do we need to open that again? We don't. Okay. So open for discussion. Questions, concerns? Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, I'm not muted. So when we discussed the Poplar Street improvements, I think this project was kind of in the back of my mind as an important element of a stopgap that we might not need. But you know, if it turns out that there's more entrained flow erosion occurring in that area, this, this vicinity looks like it, it would serve an important purpose with respect to addressing that problem. And having it in public ownership is vital for that reason, as well as furthering the public recreation land use and, you know, the other items that were discussed. So I am, it's a funny little piece of, of planning commission function, this kind of, you know, double check to say it's okay with our general plan. It says something about how wonky it is to be a planning commissioner that they, that they check with us. But this wonk thinks it's completely appropriate and I am, I am fully supportive.
Anyone else? I think we're good.
I move that we approve the resolution if I can be recognized. I should have.
Yes, of course. Commissioner Benjamin, we have a motion.
Yeah, I move that we approve the resolution for general plan conformance for the four parcels named in the draft resolution located in the regional public recreation land use designation and the West of Railroad plan development area for purchase by the City of Haffington Bay.
That's pretty clear. Do we have a second?
I, I second that.
You have a second. Commissioner Gossett?
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
And Chair Goran?
Yes, please.
Motion approved, three zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, it feels funny to just end, but we did everything else alright. So thank you very much. Okay, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.